Follow me into order. I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, we come to you asking a healing prayer for our country. Grant us compassion for those less fortunate. Show us the way to make their lives less difficult and more fulfilling. Strengthen our schools, the teachers, and the students that need your intervention. Define ways to improve the many issues that face our students daily. Guide them to know the comfort of your touch and healing hands. Keep our employees safe as they work to provide services for our community. In a world of confusion, disagreement, and division, the only constant is the knowledge of your love for all of your children. Continue to hold us in your hands as we walk through life with the gifts you have given us. In your holy name we pray, amen.
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 Number three is a special presentation. Jay Voiles, Director of Public Utilities, will provide a brief presentation of the Electric Division and Public Power Week plans.
I saw some of them out doing their work today at East Almaral School.
That works. Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. This week is National Public Power Week for 2023. We've got a good portion of our Electric Division here. It's not quite everybody, but it's those that can make it. So we're glad that they're here, that we can celebrate them this week and really honor what they do for the city. And this afternoon, I just have a very brief presentation for you just to kind of encapsulate, you know, this past year and also some things that we're looking at doing going forward, just to showcase the work that these guys do on a daily basis. So what does public power mean to Albemarle? It means that we are community-owned, operated, and controlled. We're governed by you as City Council, which are members of the community. We're not-for-profit. Utility bill payments and other revenue in the electric fund goes directly back into paying for the operations and capital improvement. We don't have any shareholders for profit sharing. We're also customer-focused. We provide a high level of quick, efficient, and communicative customer service from members of this community. We always have people that are ready to answer the phones. We always have people that are ready to respond to outage events or any of our customers' needs at a moment's notice. We provide safe and reliable service. Outages are less frequent than regional competitors on average. I've got some stats here in the next few slides to show that. And when outages do occur, service is restored more quickly. Again, these are members of our community. They live local, they work local. So when we have things that go wrong, they are quick to respond and get things back up and running. We also provide lower-cost electricity. This is mainly due to our nonprofit structure and keeping local dollars local. Electric rates are lower than larger regional providers. In terms of electric rates, again, just a few comparisons that we have regionally here. And as a reminder, through your vote, that City of Albemarle has reduced electric rates by 15% over the last five years. This was all during a period of record-level inflation and rising cost of utility. By doing so, we've passed our wholesale power cost reductions over to our customers. That's what pretty much allowed us to do this. And we're also offering the lowest available retail residential electric rate to all residential customers compared to classing out customers based on the type of their appliances. So not naming any of our competitors, but again, these are regional competitors. As you can see across the board, for the most part, we have the lowest electric rate. Our facility's rate is $1 more than another competitor, but it's pretty much washed out by the cents per kilowatt hour. And based on 1,500 kilowatt-hours of monthly usage, which, you know, you can kind of get that in the summertime or in the winter. Average usage is maybe around 1,000, 1,200 kilowatt-hours. But you can see that our customer's bill is lower by about $20 a month, give or take, which can add up to a lot over the course of a year. In terms of reliability, these metrics are provided by our partners at Electric Cities, and they include investor-owned utilities and co-ops. But again, the very same regional competitors. These are system average interruption duration in minutes and also system average interruption frequency of outages over a course of a year. So as you can see, Albemarle is very close to one of our other regional competitors. However, if we do have a system outage, the customer can expect on average about an hour of being out of power. Over the course of a year, on average, customers may not experience an outage at all. So 0.56, that's the frequency of outages per year for our system. And over on the far right, you can see that if power does go out, one of our regional competitors takes about 2 hours and 20 minutes to restore service on average. So when we are at the hour mark, that is something that we can be very proud of and appreciate the work that these guys do. They respond very quickly. And just as a reminder, not all outages are caused by weather. They can be caused by animals, squirrels, birds, trees, and overgrowth, which I'm going to talk a little bit about that on one of our next slides. They can be caused by vehicle accidents and also extreme temperatures. And if anyone on council remembers Christmas of 2022, we had some very record-low temperatures. And while we did lose power in some areas due to some overloaded transformers, but some other communities had rolling blackouts. And we were very glad that we didn't have that here. Just calling out some investments in the system. We are transitioning from our Harris-Norstar billing environment to Tyler Technologies Enterprise Billing System. One of the great things about this is we're going to basically offer a mobile app that our customers can use to not only pay their bills, but they can also receive messages about the utility if there are service outages on electric or water side. They can also use this feature to communicate directly with our customer service team. So it doesn't always have to be a phone call or something like that. They can communicate through this app. We also have the implementation of advanced metering infrastructure. This will allow for a more efficient meter reading process and more accurate service outage detection and management. So we're really excited to bring that project on board. The billing system does have to occur before we roll into that completely, but it is on our radar and it will be completed soon. We also did the Carolina Avenue Substation Bus Work this year. We are reconditioning the regulators in that substation, and we made several structural improvements. And those were our crews and also a contract crew that helped complete that work. We also have the specialized Aspil and Giraffe Crew that is clear-cutting primary circuits right now. They're currently out in the system. You probably noticed some very public areas along 2427 and some other, what we call backbones of the system that have been cleared. This is a process that we should be doing every five to seven years. And it's good preventative maintenance to prevent the most amount of outages in the most vulnerable areas. We're also working on the US Highway 52 South Reconducting Project. That was a project that was budgeted for this fiscal year. We did purchase some material in the last fiscal year, but it is a project that we're currently seeing to be completed. And then going forward into future budget years, we're looking at the NC Highway 73 Reconducting Project, which will increase reliability along these two main corridors. Having a locally-controlled and operated public power utility has allowed us to make some beautification efforts across the city, some of which we've seen activity on as of very recent. One is the Courthouse Alley Project. This Electric Division installed the underground conduit system and with the assistance of water sewer utility systems. We also have the downtown Christmas lights in conjunction with the Public Works Department. I did want to put this in here, that contrary to popular belief, these lights are not added on to anybody's utility bill. It is something that the city pays for. And then coming soon is another project for mast-arm traffic signals at South Second Street and MLK Avenue and South Street. I know this is a project that's kind of been on the radar for quite some time, but it's one of the last intersections we have in the city to complete. So that's something to be looking forward to going forward. And for strengthening public power, this is one of the cooler things that we've had this past year, is that the City of Albemarle has partnered with Stanley Community College to teach the Electric Line Worker Program. We're now going into our third semester, and Jimmy Honeycutt has led the program on behalf of the city with some help of others. We have Jimmy right here in the back. He's teaching the program for us, and we're really excited to have that partnership. The students are provided an instruction from a highly experienced, active leader in the line worker field. And most of the students that have graduated have graduated with jobs directly in the field. So since instructing, we have hired one on our staff. But we do have several on staff that already have completed this program prior to our instruction. So again, we're happy to have that partnership. As far as this week goes, you should have in your agenda packet the schedule for the Public Power Week events. We have several local school visits for equipment demos. The City Electric Division will be adopting H Street for regular litter maintenance. This is going to be Moss Springs Road, Moss Springs Road between Northeast Connector and Spate Road, as well as Fleetwood Avenue. We're doing this in memory of Dennis Curley. He passed away on October 21st of last year. Dennis lived in this neighborhood, specifically on Fleetwood Avenue. So we felt that it would be important to, you know, honor his memory and be involved in that community just for Dennis. So and also, everyone who's listening, watching, or anything like that, feel free to join us at Food Truck Friday at City Lake Park on October 6th to pick up a gift bag that we're giving out. You can also talk with a line worker and take your picture with the exploding hot dog. We have a cutout, just as a reminder not to go near down-power lines if they are down near you. The hot dog is kind of a funny thing to engage kids. We've got stickers and those kinds of things. So that's pretty much what we have planned. Outside of this presentation, I just want to say I appreciate everything that you guys do for the city, even those that are not here right now. They put in a lot of time, effort, overtime hours, basically when we need them the most, when the power goes out, whether it's snowing, raining, lightning, anything like that. These guys are out there sacrificing their personal time to make sure our lights are on and are provided with good service. So I want to appreciate them and thank you for your dedication.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I had the opportunity this morning to see many of you in action with a large number of kids from Central. And I was surprised at how quickly you processed them through and how much they were attentive to what you were doing. So thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate what you do, and everybody appreciates you keeping our power up.
Absolutely.
Council comments?
So I was at East Almaral this afternoon, and I saw another group of children over there. And as crazy as this may sound, they were first, second, and third graders, and they were asking some good questions, even as little people. So thank you very much, and I hope you all have a great four more days of going out to schools. That should be fun.
I just want to say, I mix and mingle with people all over Stanley County, and they're all jealous of us who don't live in your district. Because everybody in this county knows that you guys get power back on before anybody else. And we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
I know when I have a call from neighbors, when we do have the rare occasion when the power's out, a few months ago, I think, I don't need to call and check. I can just say, they'll be there in a minute, because you're going to be there in a minute. I don't even need to call and check. So they think I know what I'm doing, but you guys know what you're doing.
Again, thank you, gentlemen, very much. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you so much.
Have a good week.
Thank you.
Be safe. Next is approval of minutes. Council considered the minutes from the September 18th Regular and Closed Meeting. I know we have a correction. Ms. Hall?
Now, and now I can't find it. It is in the last paragraph, Cindy, of when Kiker was here making his presentation. There is a statement that says the new proposed will not be underground. It probably needs to read that it will not follow the current water pipes, but will be, and it did make some mention about it would be following the road. What we need to take out is that it will be underground, but it will not be following the current water pipes.
It said it would follow the highway but would not be underground.
Yep.
Well, obviously, the pipe is going to be underground.
But it doesn't, yeah. It will not follow the existing pipe.
Stone, there's one more that we need to correct. When we were talking about Harwood Street, it talked about 2,200 square feet a house. It just says, it repeats 2,200 twice. It needs to be deleted, one of those. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to public hearing. Special Use Permit 2303, a donation drop-off at 814-2427, Highway East. I'm going to allow staff to introduce this project and then allow the applicant to make comments. After that, I will allow anyone who has standing to make comments. Typically, someone who has standing is someone that property adjoins it or is directly affected. So staff, would you go ahead and introduce? And then when you come up, if you're going to make comments, do I have anybody from Goodwill here to speak? Come up if you would. Who else is going to ask to speak? I think I have Doug Hume and Heather Kilty. Anyone else? All of you come up, and I need to swear you in. Everybody put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony or evidence you are about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God? Okay, thank you. Staff, if you go ahead and introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an application submitted by Goodwill Industries of Southern Piedmont. Stephanie Hoffman, who was just sworn in, is here representing. She's the applicant on this, representing Goodwill. And what they're requesting is a donation. I'll have to see what they called it on here. But basically, it's a mobile trailer for donations. And it's going to be in front of the old mall where the new Goodwill is going. This is intended to be a temporary location for this. I believe six months is what they're shooting for with that. The city does have a special use requirement for this in GHBD, which is where this is located. And it requires, there's several criteria that go with that, which have been addressed in the application here. Again, site address, 814 North Carolina 2427 bypass. The current use, it is GHBD. And this is tax record 33360. Go ahead, and I'm going to show some of the materials at the bottom here first, just so we can get a little background on it, and then I'll go into the other document. So the Attended Donation Center, the ADC, they will have an attendant out there assisting with donations and will be open during regular business hours. They've provided some information right there on what the ADCs are. Hours of operation. These are some other facilities, I believe, in Charlotte, where these have been operated before. And then this is the approximate location where the ADC would be located. Goodwill is going to be going into the building back here. I think that's most of that document. We have everything else. On, give me just a second to pull this back up again. There we go. Okay, here's where it's located in the ordinance. 92.102 GHBD, Conditional Use Section 13. Donation drop boxes, trailers, accessory buildings, or any other method of collection for donated items, including but not limited to clothing that is located outside the principal structure on the property shall meet all of the following. Should be operated by a nonprofit group. Display the owner's name and phone number and prominent location on the donation drop box. Located on a developed lot that is owned or leased by the nonprofit group who maintain the boxes located no closer than 20 feet to any public right-of-way. Constructive non-combustible material and be watertight, properly maintained. Removal of any donations left outside the box in 36 hours. Not located within any parking space, within any landscaped area required by regulations of the City of Albemarle Code. And obtain a City of Albemarle Special Use Permit prior to placement, which is what the applicant is here for tonight. Again, here is the large property that the mall is located on. This would be located there, approximately where the point is, right there. These are the regular standards that we have, the five criteria for you to consider. There are additional conditional criteria that are included later on here, which we will also try to answer. The first of these, use will not materially endanger the public or health, public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. The applicant's statement is that similar to trailers parked in front of Lowe's, Goodwill would place trailer in the parking lot in front of the space under construction. It would be near the grassy median area that borders the driveline around the parking lot behind Taco Bell. Location will be a minimum of 20 feet out of any public street right-of-way. Goodwill and Dills Properties, which is the owner of the mall, has an executed lease on the space within the Albemarle Crossing Shopping Center. This will not pose any substantial threat to health or safety. Staff's comment is that we believe the proposed Attended Donation Center will not endanger the public health or safety. It is located in a well-lit and lightly-used area of an existing parking lot away from city right-of-way. Criteria B is that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The applicant contends that it was the Attended Donation Center will be operated by a nonprofit, which is Goodwill. Does have identification on the trailer. Goodwill is currently under lease with the owner of the site. The area noted on the attached exhibit is further than 20 feet from any public right-of-way. The ADC is a metal trailer, does not contain any combustible material, and is watertight. Any donations that are left after attended hours will be cleaned up the following morning. Any items too large be placed inside the trailer, such as furniture, can be stored under the trailer and will be picked up within 24 to 36 hours. Location will be in a parking area that is unrestricted by code. Donations accepted here include clothing, shoes, books, toys, housewares, small household electronics. All items will be stored to stock the store opening in 2024. And all items not suitable for use in the store are handled responsibly and proposed, properly disposed of through recycling or approved disposal methods. No combustible materials are accepted. The ADC will have signage that identifies Goodwill as the operator of the site. Since this is not a Dropbox-type location, all contact information is available from the attendant working there as well. In addition, all donation receipts have contact information as well as details on programs and services funded by the sales of those donations. Criteria C is the staff's comment. We believe the proposed use will meet all required conditions of the special use definition. C, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity. The applicant contends that ability to place an ADC during construction is a vital need in order for us to be prepared for a successful grand opening. Presence of this ADC in eventual store will serve the greater good in providing a new retail tenant to the area for the enjoyment of the residence. And in addition, will allow the community to reduce the amount of items sent to the landfill. 90 cents of every $1 from the sale of those donated items funds our programs offered to the community online and in person. Temporary site until the construction is completed on the retail store, six to 12 months max. Staff's comment, the proposed location is in a commercial area with trailers, displays, and similar uses. Since there is currently limited services such as this, staff believes this serves a need to the Albemarle and will be a public necessity. The proposed use is also temporary. Proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent use in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, operating characteristics. The applicant's comment, the ADC will operate Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Full-time attendant will be employed to ensure donation drop-offs remain in good condition with items dropped after hours cleaned up each morning upon opening. In addition, our transportation department will service the location as needed and be called for in any unusual circumstances that led to items dropped that cannot be immediately handled by onsite attendants. Similar to Lowe's, an adjacent property, there is merchandise display in trailers. This corridor caters to commercial areas, commercial sales. Staff believes the proposed use is similar in scale and design to those surrounding it. Its hours of operation will also be similar, and it will be staffed. E being general conformance with adopted plans. The applicant's statement is that Goodwill intends to comply with all laws and ordinances set forth by the City of Albemarle. Staff's comment is that based on the 2028 Future Land Use Map and Plan, staff believe the intended use meets the specifications of the commercial designations in the plan. These are other conditional requirements. I think most of this is already pretty much addressed by the specific criteria that's laid out in this SUP in the ordinance. But we would go ahead and cover these. Placement, specific placement of primary and/or accessory structures and/or uses. The applicant has referred to the map that shows the location for the site and as included in the executive lease with Dills Properties. Similar to Lowe's and adjacent property, there is merchandise display in trailers. This corridor caters to commercial sales. Staff believes the use is an easily-visible and lightly-used area in close proximity to similar structures and displays. The next item relates to parking spaces with ingress and egress. Location of onsite parking, designated loading areas, means of ingress/egress for all vehicles, including service vehicles. Really more designated for, you know, permanent structures. So a little bit less important in this case. The applicant states that in addition to the footprint of the ADC, we use a tractor-trailer to service the site. Additional parking spaces will be utilized during that time we service the location. The staff's comments are that we have no parking requirements in this property, and there is ample unused parking there at this time. We wouldn't envision there being any kind of issue with that from this particular use. The environmental impact, compliance with laws, including but not limited to floodplain and watershed regulations. The applicant states, based on their experience at donation sites in other counties and locations, there will be no environmental impact on the site. Staff believes that the above-stated property is not located within the regulated floodplain and/or watershed areas on already-developed property. There should be minimal environmental impacts because of this. Screening, buffering, landscaping. Installation of screening, buffering, fencing, and landscaping were necessary to protect adjacent property. The applicant states that this is a commercial area and a temporary feature, so no buffering is needed. Staff would agree with that. And there's no buffering or landscaping requirements for this type of temporary use. And all properties surrounding this are also zoned the same, so it would not be a requirement even in a buy-right use in the ordinance. Effects on nearby properties, including noise, odor, lighting, and traffic. The applicant states the hours will be during daylight. No powers run to the trailer, so there's nothing that will cause disruption to the other properties. Staff believes, based on the intended use, they'll have little to no negative impacts on nearby properties, with most of the use being during business hours and with an attendant onsite. Compatibility, general compatibility with the nearby properties, impacted neighborhoods, appropriateness of scale, design. Applicant states that this is an appropriate use and scale for the surrounding areas. Staff's comment is that the trailer will be temporary in a similar scale to the sheds and trailers already on adjacent properties in the parking lot next door. Consistency with policy. And Chapter 92 zoning regulations. The applicant states that the Attended Donation Center use meets all city policies and plans. Staff's comment, there is nothing in the future land use plan and map or other plans which would lead to this use being inconsistent. Other factors, we do not believe there's any other factors to be considered. Neither did the applicant at this time. Does council have any questions from staff?
Counsel? We're here from the applicant, Nick.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hoffman. I'm the real estate manager with Goodwill, and this is Amy Jordan. She leads our VP of Business Development and Facilities. And we are beyond excited to be coming to the City of Albemarle. We've been trying to put a store here for many years. The things just haven't come together. So we're very excited that we have found the right property. And Dusty Mason, the landlord, has been amazing to work with, and we're super excited about contributing to your community and hiring a lot of folks to work in the store. So as far as the Attended Donation Center goes, as you heard through Kevin's comments through the application, it's very different than a Dropbox. We don't do drop boxes because we want to be able to have a conversation with our donor about if they have a question about what we're going to do with it or what our programs are. And we want that opportunity to thank them in person and hand them a receipt. And thank you for donating to Goodwill. And that's really the point of having an Attended Donation Center with an attendant that's there full-time. really the point of having an attended donation center with an attendant that's there full-time, uh, Monday through Sunday, um, for the hours that we're in the, in the, um, the proposal. Um, we keep our sites very cleaned up, and we check on them regularly, so we really have never had a landowner or a rent, anyone that we've rented or gotten information or gotten a space from having any issues that we haven't been able to address within 24 hours in most cases. Now, I'll give us an extra 12 since we're a little further out, um, from Charlotte, um, because our hub is out of, near the airport, so it takes us a little while to get out here, but we will be, we will attend that donation center regularly. And we don't accept furniture at it, but Kevin asked me what if something large gets dropped off, and because, uh, the trailer is up off the ground, we can tuck it away if it's going to be 20, we want to have a sofa sitting out in the middle of the parking lot. If the attendant was there, they would have said, we don't accept that here, and have made a recommendation maybe the where they could send it, but if it gets dumped in the middle of the night, we'll deal with it as soon as the attendant gets there in the morning and, and put it up underneath the trailer, um, and so that it's out of, out of sight. We don't want anything to be unsightly.
Counsel, have any questions, comment?
Yep, I'm Amy Jordan. I'm the Vice President of Business Development and Facilities. J O R D A N. You're welcome.
If I understand correctly, this is a temporary until such time as Dills gets the construction completed on the building.
Yeah, and the construction is still underway if anybody's been by there. Um, we use these attended donation centers. In some places, they're permanent, in areas where we maybe don't have a store or a way to accept them, but when we open a new store, it's an opportunity for us to get introduced to the community by being here a little bit ahead of when we can open our doors, and it provides us a runway to be able to get acclimated and to start the process of, of, of collecting donations to be able to, to sell in the store. And we foresee that we will be supplementing, um, donations, so there will be donations coming from other areas in order to keep the store full, but we, you know, we want to engage with the community as early as we can.
Thank you.
What is your anticipated time of the store actually opening?
February.
Yeah, she would know better.
Yeah, so we're on task for February. Um, they are moving right along, and, um, a lot of it is just internal work that, you know, electrical, that's slow. Um, but the landlord, Dusty, has been great to work with, and he's doing some exterior facade work as well to, um, improve the appearance of the store, so.
Approximately, how many people will, will the store employ, and are you bringing staff from Charlotte? Will we be hiring from this community, or what?
We'll be hiring from this community, so our typical process is as we get closer to that opening timeline, probably towards the end of the year, first part of the year, they'll host multiple job fairs in the market. Um, and we'll have probably around 25 individuals that will be residents of this community or surrounding communities, depending on where they come from, but, um, we're doing an event, actually, uh, Wednesday, we're open, getting ready to open a store in Laurinburg, North Carolina, and they're holding a job fair Wednesday, and we're opening there in November. So about a month and a half, month prior to a store opening to give us time to also train them.
Great.
Um, and get them acclimated to the processes.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any more questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Heather Kilday, 508 North Knight Street.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Heather, pull that mic down so we can.
There we go.
Thanks.
Better? Short girl back here, sorry. Um, Stanley Community Christian Ministry was established 38 years ago, right here in this community, to coordinate needed services for those who face financial emergencies and personal hardship. As an organization staffed by caring and helpful people who all reside in Stanley County, it channels the compassionate outreach of all churches and other helping agencies into one thoughtful and intentional effort. These efforts have resulted in 75,000 meals being served last year, 700,000 pounds of food being distributed through our food pantries, $260,000 worth of financial assistance shared with residents of Stanley County, and over 1,000 people were given clothing through our clothing closet. The clothing closet in, at Stanley Community Christian Ministries provides 60-plus percent of our annual budget. All the money that Stanley Community Christian Ministries receives from the sale of those clothes stays directly in the county. Um, we are working to improve our services by adding a new food pantry, which will be a market-style food pantry. We will have, um, continued meals through our community tables in Albemarle and Norwood, and we would just like to ask for your continued support of the Stanley Community Christian Ministry, as this would provide a substantial hit on the donations that we would receive through our community. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, and, and I appreciate what Stanley Community Ministries does and everything. I think, great program, but, um, this is quasi-judicial, um, and I would encourage all to focus on the criteria that you're supposed to hear about this particular case, um, and not, it's, it's not really part of the, the criteria, so.
Thank you.
Consider that, please.
Doug Hume, 1051 PD Avenue.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a member of the board at Stanley Community Christian Ministries, and, um, I saw that one of the criteria for, um, uh, this is that it meets a community need. I didn't see any statement of need being met. I can tell you that Stanley Community Christian Ministry met the need by providing $1.3 million worth of services last year to our, uh, city and our region. And as, um, Heather mentioned, 60%, over 60% of our sales come from the, uh, clothing closet, uh, there were the sales coming from our clothing closet provide over 60% of our budget. Um, we are meeting the needs of our community, uh, in a strong way, and we are, um, we, we don't believe that this is necessary, um, and, uh, we don't believe that this, uh, meets a need, and it will actually detract from, uh, services being provided, uh, to our citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come up.
Move closed poll here.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, closed public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, I give you the opportunity for you to recuse yourself if you have a conflict of interest, which means you are close with a business or any association with any of the affected persons, or I give you the opportunity to disclose any ex parte communications with this party or anyone else with knowledge of the case. Do I have any?
Yeah, I'll excuse myself, or ask to be excused.
Reason?
Uh, conversation with a board member.
Uh.
Christian ministry.
Tell me which one, so I can clarify it for the record.
Ron Lawfman.
I mean.
Uh, Stanley Ca, Christian Ministries.
Christian Ministries, okay. Mr. Hunt is asked to be excused. Counsel, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel will move into deliberation. If you have any questions or comments, I'll remind you, in just a few minutes, you're going to be evaluating the evidence, and there's three criteria you must consider on each finding of fact. Evidence is competent, it is sufficiently trustworthy and reliable, and that is legally fit and acceptable for consideration by the board. The evidence is material if it shows that one of the standards to be applied will or will not be met. For instance, if the standard at issue is the impact of project, of the project on property values, facts that have no bearing on the property value impact are not material. Evidence is substantial if it is relevant or something a reasonable mind would regard as sufficient to support a specific conclusion. In this context, the issue is whether the totality of the evidence received could reasonably support the conclusions reached by the board. Now, in deliberation, so any comments or questions before we move forward?
I do have one question of the petitioner.
Yes, ma'am.
The petitioner will come to the front, just so I can ask a question. Is it practice of Goodwill to accept, um, once a store is open, a storefront is open, is it practice to accept that, that store as well?
Yes. All of our stores have donation drop-offs. This is just in advance of the physical, and it's going to be in the rear of this particular location. It'll be in the rear of the mall.
Okay.
It'll be a drive-through.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Counsel, I'm going to move into findings of facts. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. I'll entertain a motion, counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve or?
Yes.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively that the use be a public necessity. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number five, that it be in general conformance with the adopted plan. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, as we move on to approving special use permit 2303, you have the opportunity to, to append any conditions that you want on it. One of the conditions that I think would be appropriate is one that the applicant talked about, in that they would remove this box when the store opens or 12 months. I think it would be appropriate to put that condition on your approval if you so desire.
I move that, that, uh, condition.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, motion to approve the special use per 2303 with that condition.
Second.
Was there?
What was the condition? The one I just stated. That, that, the.
When the store.
It would be temporary, located temporarily for six months or for, until the building is open, or 12 months, whichever is long.
Is that the?
That was what the applicant put in their application.
Is that the only special condition?
That's the only one that has been mentioned, ma'am.
Is that the only one?
Mr. Robinson, did you have any special condition? Okay. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Ms. Hall was against.
Who was the, who was the second?
Who was the second?
Benton was the second. Sorry, but I didn't say that. Under agenda, agenda adjustments, I've had a request to add a personnel section to the closed session.
Mayor, just to confirm real quick, that was a, that was a motion to approve with the condition, is that correct?
With the condition.
Okay, thank you.
I have a agenda adjustment to add a personnel section to the closed session.
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Hall, second. By Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving into municipal calendar, is in your agendas, anyone have any comments or questions?
Your honor, uh, draw your attention to, uh, January, uh, January 1st is a holiday, and the 15th is Martin Luther King Day. I believe we need to make adjustments to our meeting schedule.
And, and that is actually on the.
Nine B.
Later end, later on, on the agenda, but since you brought that up, since you brought it up, I know what we've usually done is go to the Tuesday after. I would propose, since there are five Mondays in the month of January, that we move, if, if it's okay with counsel, move, um, to Monday, the 8th, and Monday, the 22nd, which is completely away from both of those holidays.
Counsel, what's your preference? I have a motion to move it to January 8th and January the 22nd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, Resolution 2322, to set a public hearing to consider the Long Lake annexation petition. Mr. Robinson, would you come up? Uh, he left me. Mr. Robinson, in regard to setting the, uh, public hearing for the Long Lake annexation petition, we delayed that, and then it was withdrawn for the utilities issue.
That's correct.
Before we set another one, do we know they have worked out utility problems?
They were given, um, three or four different options that they could do there from, uh, Jay Voiles. Um, he, I was on the email with them on that. I confirmed with Kyle, and I told him, I said, what we don't want to do is to have this added to petition and have it come for annexation, and then have this be tabled and continued over and over again. He said, no, no, we very much want to go ahead with it. In fact, he wanted it to be on the 16th. I told him we're going to be doing it on, in November instead, so yes, he's ready to go ahead with it.
Okay. Counsel, what's your wishes? Request is to put, set the public in for November 6th.
So moved, second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second. By Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Nine C is a reminder, uh, we will be dedicating the Bishop's Richardson Street unveiling ceremony on Sunday afternoon at 1:30. Um, it's James E. Richardson, we're going to have J E R on the sign. That's just a reminder in case you will, can, and hopefully will attend. Moving around the table, Mr. Aldridge.
Uh, yes, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Bramlett.
I want a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Uh, this afternoon, I spent some time over at the museum, and I, I don't know how many of you attend, uh, things at the museum or have even gone through it, but I, I looked in the, the, uh, uh, register of people who go in that museum. It is right in front of City Hall, and I want to read to you quickly some places where people come from in the last few, two, few months to visit that museum. Matthews, Yanceville, Rockwell, Troy, Irvington, Virginia, Concord, Myrtle Beach, Hull, Georgia, Cookeville, Tennessee, Charlotte, Gaithersburg, Maryland, Columbia, South Carolina, Auckland, New Zealand, Waxhaw, Bennettsville, Thomasville, Lumberton, Mount Gilliard, Colorado Springs, St. Petersburg, Florida, Society Hill, South Carolina, Wakefield, Virginia, Orlando, Florida, Burlington, Columbus, Ohio, Charleston, South Carolina, Staley, North Carolina, Cornelius, Fredericksburg, Virginia, Durham, Birmingham, Alabama, Sandy Ridge, North Carolina, Kings Mountain, Houston, Texas, Cornwall, England, and Inlet, New York. I think that's very significant that we have this unit here in, right in, on Second Street in, in Albemarle that draws people from all, literally from all over the world, and I'd encourage any of you to go in and look at the present exhibit, which is extremely impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris, everything?
I do not.
Ms. Hall.
Uh, and along that same line, the History Center provided two opportunities on Saturday, um, the Snuggs House did, uh, that were very well attended, um, about his, you know, Heritage Days kinds of things, so it was very good. So, um, a lot of people are there. Some of those folks I've seen leave the History Center and then come to see the Charters of Freedom, which is what we, that's the reason we put them there. Uh, attaboy, um, I have seen that there have been some additional lights put down at Courthouse Square back on, or they're, they've been updated or something, because it looks much brighter there now, and it looks a lot better, um, particularly, well, at nighttime, when you've got folks that are in and out of there.
that are in and out of there. So it looks really good. Must have been Saturday when I was downtown, I saw some scooters on the sidewalk, and I'm wondering who needs to be contacted when we see scooters on the sidewalk. I just asked.
An ordinance, and so I guess somebody needed to contact the police, and they would, and then we'd have to make the company, you know, let Ms. Birch know, and she can also make the company aware, but in terms of enforcement right then.
I understood originally if you let the company know, like, make a picture, time, location, they can go back and see who it was, and they can cut them off.
And that's what, I had remembered that too, that we could do that, because we, our police department that need to have to police those, we just, manpower's not there.
Right, if you're talking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But, for instance, Saturday, someone that was with me said, are they supposed to be on the sidewalk? And I said, no, they're not. You know, you take a picture and you, that's Saturday, and you send it to somebody, who do you send it to, you know, Chris? And when, you know, then they get contacted next week that they can't ride anymore. So whatever the process is, we need to make sure folks know what that is, because I, it wasn't, I mean, I saw them, because somebody else said, you see them on the sidewalk, so.
So Ms. Birch is the contact for the company, so that information can go to her, because they've got the time and date. But, I mean, if we're talking about immediate enforcement, that would have to be the police department.
And just call the police department and tell them, sorry about that, chief. Update on the PD cemetery. Have we got, I mean, did, has anything been, I'm not pushing anybody, I just want to make sure if anything's been done, that that the folks that are the petitioners or the questioners in that particular situation are kept in the loop. Do we know anything that's been done?
The company that's going to do the work, our contractor wants, has been shared to hold harmless agreement or some sort of statement from the city, so our attorney will draft that when she's able.
Okay, so we're, okay, so by the next meeting, we ought to be able to have them something. And another shout out, and I don't know to whom this needs to be given, but if you ride down or ride out West Main and you look at the creek, the right-of-way to the creek, it's very obvious that there's been some cleanup done there. It's very obvious that there's been some, on Melk or Branch, and Ross, I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is you or if this is Jay, whoever it is, or whichever department, it looks great, because you can tell there's been some cleanup and some spraying to kill some weeds that are right in the right-of-way, so, and that might be part of what we're doing right now with with the grant, with that, the grant that we have, or the, is it not? Is it us that's doing that? It's not? Well, it looks like there has been, and.
Mr. Ferris.
The work on West Main Street is probably part of the Phase 3 INI project. So you see, they're digging up, replacing the sewer line through there, so that's, I think that's also been a staging point for a lot of their equipment, too. So I think, you know, it's been cleaned out, cleared out, probably a little bit more than what you would normally see, but there is, there is a lot of activity going on up and down that sewer line. It's going to extend all the way across Kingsley Drive, probably to the back of, I think, the Highway Patrol Office coming out of the plant area.
Well, it's very obvious there's been some cleaning going up, so that's all.
This is my annual public service announcement for breast cancer awareness month. I have my yellow, my pink shirt on, yellow shirt, pink shirt on. Just a reminder, lots of advances have been made in breast cancer treatment. I think many of us have been affected by it through a loved one or a family member or a friend or neighbor. I think the five-year success survival rate now on stage two is about 93%. Stage three survival rate's about 72%. So the quicker you get it identified, the much higher the rate of success in curing it. So if you need a mammogram, don't delay it. Get it done. Mr. Dry.
Again, special thanks to everyone in the electric division for what you do. All of our public, our city employees do an outstanding job, and I don't know if you can put one above the other, but we're just blessed to have the best employees that any city could have. They're loyal. You stop, you talk with them, they're, they're happy to chat with you. And again, thank you very much for the diligence that you provide in service to each and every citizen of Albemarle.
Mr. Hunt. Lisa, I'll just say, I don't know who you had do it, but thank you for mowing that ditch behind the park at Montgomery, behind the ball field. It looks the best it's looked in years. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Last Tuesday in the store, I was sitting at the back, working on some appraisal stuff. There was a lady came in, came up to the counter. All of a sudden, I heard plop, and I went out, and she'd fallen straight on her back, hit her head on the floor. She was out, but right after I got there, she came to, the employee, one of our employees grabbed the phone, 911. I guarantee you, the clock did not hit five minutes until I heard sirens coming to that store. I absolutely could not believe it, that they could answer that fast, and right behind them was the ambulance, and they took care of it. Great experience on our part, and I thank everybody who had anything to do with it.
Thank you, Chris.
One last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Last meeting, I can't remember who it was that asked for, it might have been me, but I think it was somebody else that asked for a list of downtown businesses, or was it you? And Lindsay sent that to us. Thank you, Lindsay. Actually, I asked her to print off a copy, so I have a copy if anybody wants to look at it, but it's there. And guys, it's four pages, you know, four long pages. And that's just, those are the ones that are, not the vacant ones. The vacant buildings are, that list is a different list. So I have it if anybody wants to see it.
Mayor, I gotta, I gotta add this. When I went out to that lady, she was lying on her back, and she looked up at me, and she said, are you Pat Bramlett's husband?
I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4 for Economic Development and Six Personnel. Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Remember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming out of closed session for economic development and personnel, we have nothing to report. Mr. Aldridge, I think you had something you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, we are scheduled on the next, next meeting for, I believe it's October the 16th, to discuss the, the ordinance regarding drag shows that was brought before the Planning and Zoning Board at their last meeting. I unfortunately am not going to be here on October the 16th. As many of you know, I reached out to the city manager and all of you last week requesting that topic to be placed before, or be, I'm sorry, rescheduled for the November 6th meeting as I'm going to be out of town on the 16th. I've been informed that I cannot attend, per city regulations, via email or Zoom. Is that correct, sir?
That's my understanding. I will clarify with Ms. Birch when she comes back, but that's my understanding. Our policy does not allow a council member to.
I realize this is a, this is a, this is not a normal situation, nor is it something that I would make a habit of, but I will also point out that several weeks ago, we continued the 86-acre discussion about the annexation, conversation on Long Creek. So I would like to, as a, as a 10-year veteran of this council, I'd like to be a part of that vote. I know it's going to be, it's out there in the community. There's, there's lots of petitions, and I'd like to be, I'd like to have a vote in that deal.
That will be council's decision. The only thing I bring up is, we did announce that at Planning Board. It has been advertised. I think we have to hold the public hearing and allow anyone to make comments. If council so chooses to hold it open and not make a decision to the next one, that is totally up to council. I will say that's going to be a very large crowd here that you would have to make, come twice if we do that. Totally up to council, however you want to do it, and you do not have to make a decision tonight, because you can't make a decision tonight. If you want to give a consensus privately, that's fine, but you would not make that decision until the next meeting when we actually hold that public hearing. Anyone have any comments you want to say? You're welcome to do that.
But we can have the public hearing at the next meeting, and then it would be possible to vote at the first meeting in November.
That's totally up to council.
Yes, the, the public hearing has already been, has already been posted, so it's going to be heard on October the 16th. But you guys are, I will not be here, so you'll have to decide if you would entertain putting the vote off, the actual vote itself off to the November 6th meeting.
So as I see it shared, I've got one little caveat to what I shared before, which is, hold the public hearing and then hold it over to the first meeting in November. You could conduct the public hearing and close the public hearing, and then take action at the November 6th meeting. I think that's also a possibility.
Say, say that again. We could.
Hear the comment.
I think council can hold the public hearing as scheduled, has two options, hold the public hearing as scheduled, and then keep it open and continue it to the first meeting in November. Also have the option of holding the public hearing as scheduled, taking the public input, closing the public hearing, but holding over the decision.
And, and I might add, too, with this being a, you know, it's, it's been a topic of conversation, I've had a lot of phone calls on it, and most of you probably had as well, that may be a, you know, we give, we give the, the public the opportunity to come before us, and we let the public hearing be heard. I can watch it, social media, via social media or on the website, and then, you know, November 6th meeting, that's when we actually take the actual vote. That'll give you all, that'll give all of us an opportunity to let it sink in and, and let your, you know, kind of think it through as far as which way you want to go, because we don't want to, you know, my mind is, I don't want to push this thing through just in a, in a split second. It might be a benefit to let everybody, regardless of what side of the fence you're on, make their, make their comments, take it, think about it, and then come, come in on November 6th, ready to vote on it.
I think that would be, would be fine if council wants to do that way, but I do think you should hold your public hearing, and probably go ahead and close the public hearing and just hold your vote. That would help clear up any confusion of people coming back wanting to speak a second time at the second meeting. Just close the public hearing at first meeting and then have your vote at the next one. Totally up to council, but you will not make that motion until the next meeting.
May I make the motion that we do that?
We can't do it.
No, you can't do it now. You will have to do that at the meeting. We'll have to have the public hearing, then we close the public hearing, somebody will have to make the motion to delay the vote until the next meeting.
And I would appreciate, I would appreciate, one of my fellow council members, and I would appreciate all of your support on that deal.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Anything further? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, October 16th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed?